Next item on the agenda this evening is resolution. Resolution 2014-20, 2014-21, the visability for making improvements to Silver Fox Estate.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve resolution.
Motion's been made by Councilman Ody that we approve resolution 2014-21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? No further discussion. May we just take a roll call vote please?
Richard?
No.
Gignor?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Luttrell?
No.
Abel?
No.
Brown?
No.
Ody?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda. Under formal action is the boring machine bid. From Power Ram, an amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And this is funding available under water distribution, under fifty-one dash forty-three dash seventy-five ten. Any questions from the council?
I have a question for Jim. I know this is the way to go. Now, is it feasible to buy a machine versus hiring this done? If it is, I'm all for it.
Well, with the upcoming, you know, projects that we have, it makes more sense, in my opinion, to go ahead and buy a machine. The old machine's been good to us for many years, and I hope to have, you know, a couple decades out of this machine as well. And as far as renting one, I'm not sure if, those machines are kind of specialized unless you're going with a directional bore, and then to have that hired done is pretty expensive.
Yeah, I agree. This is better than paring up the street or anything. I would move to approve. Now, you wanting to get something on top of it, so what?
As an option, the Power Ram supplier has a locator that will go with this machine. Besides telling us right exactly where that line's at, it'll tell us how deep it is also. And I talked with the crews that would be using it, and they said, oh, that would come in awfully handy for an additional mil.
And that's included in this thirty-one thousand?
It was included into this price. The machine and the locator was the price that you're...
Yeah, I agree. That would be very good. I would move to approve.
Second. Moved by Councilman Richards that we approved the bid for the boring machine, an amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Second by Councilman Brown. Is there any further questions or discussion, Floyd?
Yeah, but I'll talk to somebody later after that. You want to go into all the city's finances on this item?
No further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the sewer pipe bid. An amount of ten thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and one cent from H.S. Supply Water Works. And this is under the CIP, thirty zero zero dash eighty-two hundred. Any questions, comments?
Well, we got two bids from the same company, different book.
I think one of them didn't, if I read it right, one of them did these facts.
Yes, one of them, they changed the fittings to a different type of joint, and that's why it was a little bit cheaper, and we'd rather stay with the joints that we're used to using.
No problem. No further questions on your patient. Entertained a motion to pass the sewer pipe bid. Moved by Councilman Miller that we pass the sewer pipe bid from H.S. Supply Water Works, an amount of ten thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and one cent. Second, second by Councilman Peterson. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the wire bid. From Stanion Wholesale, an amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. And funding's available in Electric Systems Division fifty-three dash forty-three dash eight three hundred. Any questions, comments, Floyd?
What is Spencer Pearson doing?
Okay, over here at Woodchuck Corporation, Spencer bought some of that, and we've got to put underground between Great Plains Landscaping and that old car wash.
Okay.
And the pipe's already been bored across there, because that's part of the structural boring job we have. And the wires from out there, some of it. We hope to end up with some extra wire when we're all done, but we keep running out of it pretty quick. We keep coming up with a bunch of underground projects.
Thank you.
Question. Ody, are we, do we stand to recoup any of this?
You're going to get some, but a lot of this is stuff that's going to cost us.
Yeah.
I still move.
It's been moved by Councilman Peterson that we approved the bid from Stanion Wholesale, an amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Abel. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the cereal malt beverage licenses approval.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment. There on your initial page, a request for council action, this is just, when you make your motion, the one to Shamburgh's is Shamburgh Oil, Inc., you're not Michael Shamburgh individually. They fill out a corporate application, so some minor change.
It should be just Shamburgh Oil?
Shamburgh Oil, Inc., yeah, not him individually.
So we cross off the Shamburgh Oil. Entertained a motion to accept the cereal malt beverage licenses from Arlen Mead, doing business as Boyd Bolt, Casey's Retail Company thirteen twenty-three East Main, Casey's Retail Company eight oh six North Independence, Joe Kinsher doing business as Pump Mark, Shamburgh Oil, Inc., Mitchell County Fair Association, and Leon doing business as Elk Pork Todes. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Brown that we approved the soft and cereal malt beverages, as stated. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second by the Councilman Gignor. Any further discussion?
Is this all the licenses that we know? They all get issued at this time of year?
We have one max down here, which used to be Ampride. They were on a different schedule, but after this year, they will all be calendar year. So we have them at the same time.
What about the other Mexican? Is it in the city limits?
They have a liquor license.
Oh, that's right.
Through the state.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Pardon?
Sorry, Jim. Oh, sorry, Jim.
Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the cemetery endowment committee is recommending we put cemetery endowment funds into a certificate deposit at the First National Bank. And the endowment fund at this time is forty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Any question?
Did we get that fiasco figured out going on here a few years back?
I think we have, and the endowment association is taking control.
And did they, is this just donations that people give, or do we actually have money that comes from taxes?
They said donations. No, they're actually sale of lots.
Lots.
Lots out there in the cemetery.
They're donations, because my family donated money.
Right, yeah. They can be donations as well, but bulk of that is sale of lots. And it was created about five years ago, created board, and they meet twice a year, and they just met here recently, so this is where the request is coming from.
So they're all happy with the way we do it?
Yeah, I mean, they do have a, yeah, a free board that meets, and this is the endowment fund itself.
I still move.
It's been moved by Councilman Peterson that we approve the cemetery endowment fund's certificate deposit at the First National Bank, an amount of forty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars fifty-three cents. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Abel. Any further discussion, Floyd?
Fund line for this item will stay open then, so that those funds can be, keep putting those in there until it reaches a point where they can add to?
Since it's fund account and government accounting, it's not going to take off. I'm just basically putting it into a different account. It's going to stay in our general ledger. So when you see it in the cash accounts, in the bookkeeping and whatnot, it's going to be in there.
Well, there's the certificate, though, you can't just add two dollars to that every time somebody buys a lot, though, can you?
I'm probably going to add to it, I think, on a manual basis.
So that it'll show those funds in there, and then, okay, thank you.
Any further questions? No further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the addendum to the contract with Mike Cooper. Motion's been made by Councilman Ody that we approve the contract with Mike Cooper. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Next item on our agenda, publicized journey, moved by Councilman Brown. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Abel. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We're down. We're going to discuss. We're going to discuss. Do you have anything else at this time?
No, no.
Katie, you have anything else?
No.
Thank you.
I'm trying to be very quiet. I don't think we'll take a couple minutes for you.
Yeah. You're going to have to come on. All the bills, all that stuff, I mean, we look at this one. I do have to inform my email. It's part of Ody. He doesn't need to look through it, I usually don't. So I wait and see what's going on. It explains what all the messages are all about. It'd be hard to press if you're a citizen.
All right, I need to make sure I can break this down.
I got one. I didn't see you. I think I'm going to. 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 I got on, I'm moving, so I got to hit the record and adjust how focused. I think he did a comment a bit at that. I think he did. I think he did. I think he did. I thought he, so the owners just passed. I think he did. 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 I thought I'd come back and help explain perhaps the rates a little bit better, hopefully. Because in about a week, about a month of selling dollars here, I discussed them, and I thought, I really brought this so we could play with it, however you'd like to do it, if you'd like to change any of the rates or whatever you'd like to. I mean, what we basically proposed is about a two-hundred thousand dollar right here, this first year's two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand roughly with the increase, and then about another hundred, about another hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand number is for that from the current rate today. So I guess I just really wanted to find out what you guys wanted to do as far as varying the rates. I've heard maybe the outside being more than, you know, more than what we have here. What we basically wanted to do, what our approach was, we wanted to simplify the rates. You can see over here on the right-hand side, and I apologize, I've tried to cram it on so you can see that, and maybe you guys can't, but the current residential rate, there's five different blocks. There's the first twenty kilowatt-hours piece right up here, and then the next eighty, and then, you know, so if you use a hundred kilowatt-hours, you'd be in those first two blocks. And this is, this is a good example here, just, this usage could be changed to whatever. If we had a hundred-and-twenty kilowatt-hours for the month, you can see that it's just those two blocks were covered up, and then twenty kilowatt-hours of this next block was at seven and a half cents. So that's why I wanted to bring this, and we can play with it however you'd like to, and you can see that in this example, the current customer, the current rate, if somebody was a, didn't use very much energy, would be a hundred-and-twenty kilowatt-hours, it would be nineteen dollars and ninety cents here, and this proposed rate, that actually would be less, it'd be fourteen ninety-five for the smaller users. And then as you, as you grow, and whatever those usages are, again, we can play with that, but, you know, twenty-five hundred kilowatt-hours, a pretty large customer, would actually pay more with the way this is proposed. So really, again, it's twelve cents for this, I mean, eight fifty is you get basically your first twenty kilowatt-hours at eight dollars and fifty cents, and then the next is twelve cents, and so on, and you can see that. It's a declining block, and that was really, our first effort really was just to simplify the rates, really into, we call it, three rate, three blocks here, and we want to do maybe in the next two years from there, now come back and look at just having one block, have one rate. But just not, instead of just a one, you know, from zero to five hundred, if you will, we basically wanted to kind of periodically raise those rates. Is the one on the left, is that with no increase? Basically, there's an inside rate and the outside rate, and that ain't the, I keep pointing, AC and D here, that's the current residential rate inside the city limits, and this is the current outside city limits. And so right now, it's about a four-dollar difference, and you can see a hundred ninety in this example here. So these are the current differences? That's the current rate right here. This year one, and it's year two, is correlation to these rates that I proposed here. That would still be on the left. Yeah, the left is the inside.
Three percent increase?
Right, exactly, three-point-eight percent. Well, overall, residential, I don't know that number right off the top of my head, but it'd be, that'd basically, it'd be a hundred ninety-four, so it's five dollars, so it'd be about, yeah, about three percent, two and a half, three percent. Again, depending on your usage, it's all, there'd be, there'd be less, I showed you there an example, if you, if you only use two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt-hours, then that'd be, that'd be a savings, I mean, it'd be cheap for the smaller users, for the ones that don't use much. And this is just an example. You've apparently done a lot of this. Yes, sir. What, is there a standard for inside versus outside? I mean, what? Typically, maybe what you see is you see maybe a, at most, ten percent. Well, that's what I was thinking. Right. Because there's not a whole lot of difference. There's not today, that's right, and what we're doing, and we're moving that, we just didn't want to go dramatic, I guess, just, like I said, from very little to ten percent increase, and so we wanted to do that over a two-year period. And that's, that's just the thought, but certainly, that's why we came and wanted to talk to you about it. My thought is, at the very least, that'll be paying ten percent more than inside the city. Because you're not talking, you know, you got two dollars and fifty cents difference there on that second one, the first year. Right. As you use more, again, that's what I'm, and it just varies. See, there's a, there's a fourteen-dollar difference in year one, so that's six percent there, six-point-three. Well, if we're, if, let's say we were talking about ten percent. Yes, sir. Can you go into each bracket and increase it by ten percent? Would that be a common sense way to do it? Surely you can do it that way? Didn't you say, though, that in most cases, you want to build up, rather than all of a sudden just hitting them with the? Just slapping them in the face. That was, that was my approach, at least, to eventually get there, but yes, Bob, to answer your question, that was our thought, is we would, we would gradually get that separation of the rates, and you just don't have hardly any separation at all today.
What was the percentage you wanted to do the first year?
About, the difference here, again, it's all, I'm not trying to avoid the question, that's based on your usage.
Right.
But typically, we tried to get a difference of about three to four, five percent depending on the customer class.
So in parts, in year two, we'd be at that ten percent?
You're probably about seven or eight percent. Seven or eight, yes.
I thought the goal was that we were going to raise three percent. I was talking on the outside.
That's where the inside, you're talking about the difference.
I'm talking outside.
Yeah, this, that's.
City limits, not inside.
Overall, we increased it here in the first, first year was a three-point-eight percent here with, what I have proposed, and again, just proposed, is three-point-eight percent overall, and increased, I'm not talking about outside or inside, this is just the overall, we collect two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars more than what we, what we did, what we currently are collecting.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
First one's to Lloyd. Lloyd, when you were working at the electric department, what was the average rate for average use for a small house, a single-family house? Because you were, we were talking earlier, and you said that fifty kilowatt-hours would not anywhere near enough even for a single person at a home.
I think it's around, it was around five-hundred-and-seventy percent.
For a single-family home?
An average of all residential.
I think the average here, I believe, is about seven-fifty or so. Yeah, you used to say twelve-hundred, but of course, with energy conservation and everything else.
And that's where the vast majority of our consumers would be, is in the seven-fifty range, right? The single-family.
Well, I have the going summary here, and according to this, the residential for inside the city, average usage per meter is five-hundred-and-thirty-nine.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-nine.
So I lost my calculation.
This is the average, this is, I need to cut back a whole bunch, but this is an example of, this is what, there is another piece of this rate, but for now, we're just talking about this base rate. The other piece of that is the energy fuel cost adjustment, and that's, that's the cost of your power added on to this. So typically, right now, it's about four cent adder, is your ECA, your cost of, your power cost. You, right now, you have three cents in all these rates roughly, you have three cents in these rates that cover your fuel costs, so everything that's, and it's been running about seven cents roughly, so about four cent adder is what you're seeing. So currently, this average customer is nine and a half cents, so typically, their bill is going to be about thirteen and a half cents all in.
Okay, this fuel adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, are they paying the same as we are?
Yes, sir.
That should be increased, too.
On the outside?
Yeah.
Fuel adjustments based on the cost of production, the gas and the fuel costs, that has nothing to do with, and it'd be the same for anybody, inside, outside, or anywhere.
Okay.
Because that's a standard rate, isn't it?
Well, it would be difficult to calculate two different rates, I mean, you can, I don't say you can, but typically, you don't do that.
So what would the average usage be for the medium size, the small business kilowatt-hours?
Average, small business inside the city? I got six sixteen.
Six sixteen. Six sixteen.
So that's, yeah, so their bills going down.
They're going down a little bit. It's a really small business, I mean, those are, those are certainly the...
And that's the average.
They're quite a little more.
It's the largest customer sometimes.
Well, are we really looking for...
Well, that's the problem, is, you can see those rates here, it's from nine, nine point four cents, and this is, this is the, this is the small business, I mean, you've got five, five different blocks from nine point four to seven point five, and so, you know, a rate of eight, when I go to three thousand kilowatt hours, I'm sorry. Go to three thousand kilowatt hours. Now the rate's higher. That's the problem with the, with the declining block rates, is, is it's, it's, it's so hard. Some are gonna save, I mean, that's what I showed you in the residential, the smaller people that use much are gonna have a lower bill than they have currently, and then vice versa. The more they use, the more, the higher that cost would be, the bigger expenses.
So we're not gonna really hurt the people, the ones that probably can't afford it?
Well, yeah, you're talking about the small business owners that, I'm, I'm assuming that six hundred kilowatt hours, that's not very much, and so, and, and the, you know, residential elderly and whatever would probably, this one's would use very much energy compared to what I use at my home. So that's, that's the problem, is when you say, well, there's a savings, yes, I showed you savings, but on my bill, it would be, it would be a lot, would be fourteen dollars more, whatever that I showed you there.
Well, the widow or the widower that's really on a fixed income, they're not gonna be hurt at all.
Correct, it, it would be less.
Well, the, the single person, the number we put in the previous, that's a two point six percent increase.
I don't think that's correct.
By what?
By widow with a really small amount, if they're raising the rate, it can't possibly be less.
That's two point six percent.
Here's usage, here, three hundred and fifty kilowatt hours, and they're, they're paying thirty-seven fifteen, fifteen, and they're gonna pay thirty-four fifty.
Then the next year.
Right, on the year one.
Year one.
Yeah, and year two would be less as well.
And that's on three hundred and fifty?
Three hundred and fifty kilowatt.
So the reason it's more expensive in the beginning is pretty much...